Hey, so it's not Tuesday.
Or Thursday.
It's not Thursday, but we're here.
Happy Monday.
Explain that to me. Yeah, happy Monday.
We weren't here on Thursday last week.
We were here on Thursday.
Scheduling conflicts pop into life and couldn't finesse the second dime. So here we are Monday morning, bright and early nine AM.
Bright and early, man.
Vikings suck. Made me mad last night.
I don't think you needed to see them play football to find that out.
I always need to be reconfirmed that they are mediocre.
So at this point, like we, you know, you do, I think you guys had the same record as the people that lost the Super Bowl last year though.
They do. Actually, the Vikings have a better record than them as of right now.
Oh, you guys have a better record?
The Chiefs are oh and two Vikings are one and one. So that means Vikings are better than Chiefs, right?
Yeah.
Clearly.
Right, right. Yeah, you guys are.
I'll take it.
You guys are at a race towards the bottom, but you guys are doing better than the Chiefs.
We ain't last in the division.
Hey, yeah, well, there's still.
There's still time.
There's still the Bears, right?
You bet.
Yeah, the Bears will not fail. Honestly.
They're really bad.
For the sake of Ben Johnson, I hope the Bears are all right because I kind of like him.
No, Bears are the Bears. They're going to ruin him and Caleb Williams like they always have.
Yeah, well, Caleb Williams might be ruining them.
Or that. It might go both ways. You're right.
All right, we're not here to talk Vikings. We're not here to talk Bears. We are here to talk city council because that's what we do here at Minot Town.
Yep.
We talk a lot about the city council and unexpectedly, we had a meeting last week.
Yeah, last Tuesday afternoon after we went live Tuesday morning.
To be fair, there was a, there was a, the agenda for this meeting was released Friday before.
Yeah.
Which was a special meeting to approve a buyout for some flood property. And also there was a budget working session that was going to be done. We did reach out to the city to get a better understanding of what was going on here. So one thing to be clear though, this was not a meeting that was on the original budget.
Calendar.
Calendar schedule thing that the city releases and the city council approves. There's a, at the beginning of the budget process.
It's that big calendar with, that comes out in like May or April, whenever it is, and it has the different dates throughout the whole summer accumulating in the October 10th. Budget submission to the county.
And so this special meeting was this, was something that was called outside of that or in addition to that original budget schedule. And that's fine. Not a problem with that.
And?
Yeah.
It feels, feels like there was a little, I'm just gonna.
He's gonna go for it.
It feels like it wasn't advertised as well as it could have been, which I'm not saying that's anyone's fault necessarily per se. It's just one of those things. I feel like it would have been nice to have heard about this before I saw that it was like an hour in.
Yeah.
Livestream.
So we, or I'm pretty sure we saw it before because we saw the event or, and we, because I know I looked at the agenda. I didn't look close enough. So that's on me because I missed the.
I think you're right. We texted about it that afternoon and like, hey, they have a city council meeting.
Sure. Yeah. Stop by and it's like, oh, it looks like it's to do the, the purchase and then.
Probably be 10, 20 minutes. They'll be out of there.
We didn't look close enough at it. Honestly, that, so that was on me. That's not why I'm upset though. And I'm not overly upset, but that's not why I'm frustrated or.
What frustrates you, Jonathan?
I'm just frustrated that it wasn't advertised the same. And we're not here just to talk about this. We're going to go into what was talked about. Yeah, but we're just setting basis. I don't think it was intentional at all. And I said this before we went on air. This is my feelings on it. This is not intentional. Nobody's, if anybody in the city feels like something was being trying to be hid. Or if you think that we think that you're wrong. I don't, I don't think that anything was trying to be hit by anything that went on in this meeting. I think it was simply, oh, we called another meeting. This is something that happens. Big whoop. We go and we did our public notice. We checked all the boxes. We're good to go. Let's have a public meeting. It's the budget though. And because it's a budget we have. And I'm not wanting to pick on anybody because I, the city staff is great. And even a blessing applauds the city staff and, and the, at the meeting, we have a clip of that. We have good city staff. They've been pushing that public hearing and the reason why they've been pushing that public hearing is maybe because of the two words I just said it was a public hearing. They want people to show up. So they can go and give their input on the budget and on this agenda, there was no room for that. And we actually reached out to the city to get clarification. That's part of the reason like there was no specific graphic created because. It wasn't a public hearing. It wasn't like we were trying to get people to show up to literally give their input. They can listen. It's live streamed. They can be a part. No problems there. But there wasn't a specific reason why they needed to be there. My feelings is simply this. This was a specially called meeting that wasn't just an executive session where we're getting together to approve a purchase of a property and I'll go home. This is where there's going to be, we're going to talk the budget and the budget is such a sensitive item. I wish that there was more attention drawn to that part of it. So that way more city could know because it was, was a three hour plus meeting.
Yeah, it was almost three and a half hours long.
And that was a lot of topics that were touched that were kind of interesting.
Yeah.
And I'm not even saying that city council wouldn't approve something that they should have went to. People first or something like that. That stuff we'll talk about in a minute. I'm not saying anything, anything like that. I'm just saying like, there was a lot of stuff.
Yeah, this was a meaty meeting that they did put motions on the table and approve a couple of things and like it's, it's just feels like when you add that into. On top of the discussion, it feels like it's something that you maybe wanted to make a little bit more public.
Right.
But.
Those are simply my thoughts.
Yeah, it wasn't hidden. It was live. You can go watch it again right now. It's there.
And there was no motion that was made that's going to impact the city to such a degree that we're like, oh, wow. They went and they pulled the wool over our eyes on that one. There's nothing like that.
No.
There's a couple of things that were moved out of the budget. Stuff like that. So people definitely should. Review this meeting so that way they know what the latest status of the budget is.
And with that, where do you want to start?
Well, I want to start with the purchase. So first off, there was a purchase that was made by the city. They finished out some buyout for Dwayne Breckie's land.
Yep.
1.2 million is like 10, around 10% higher than the appraised value.
Yep.
And they, Breckie requested that it close this week.
By tomorrow, actually is the goal. So I assume it's probably, if it hasn't been taken care of already, it will be today or tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's one of those things. It is, that one's done with at this point. They took care of that within like two, three minutes.
Right. They did take care of that very quickly. And it was said that Breckie was happy with how the resolution came. And it sounds like he had a lot of input on how it resolved. Next though, what I want to do is actually go and. Listen to. Lakefield give his reasoning on why the meeting was happened.
That's here.
Sets the stage.
Set the stage a little bit. I don't expect that we will have all items resolved by the end of day today. Or our time that we have. I think our hope is that we get a more clear direction on where we want to land with the end product. And then we can make some revisions to hopefully accomplish that goal. So I just want to set the stage a little bit. Graphically with, with some things of where we're at with the budget, starting at the dollars from last year, the levy from last year. Of course, we had the preliminary budget that was presented by the city manager. We have the changes that were proposed in the president's message. And I also included a, a slide for a data point for what the 25 mil levy plus 3% in growth looks like, just to kind of set the stage for. To get some parameters to take a look at. Okay, so this is the graph, 2025. This is what we levied for the 2025 budget, 24 million, 68,032. The mill rate, I think was about 96 and change, 97 mills. The 29 million, 574,130 was what was proposed in the preliminary budget. And I would say that that is the maximum that would be allowed under the calculation. The 27 million, 223,0189, that would be reflective of the changes that are proposed in the president's message. That's where we would land. With the amount that would hit the tax levy and this 25 million, 46,384. That would represent taking the 2025 levy plus the 3% calculation off of that number plus the growth.
So some cool, cool graphics he had there.
Yeah.
But also some good information in there too, on why this meeting was kind of coming to order.
Exactly.
And it really comes down to him wanting to get a little bit better base for city staff of where they want this budget to start at effectively.
Right.
Do we want to use one of those prior budgets that we can? Do we want to use last year's budget? And if so, how do we want, they wanted some guidance on where to go from there.
Yeah, basically they're at the point where, hey, we need to get this budget finalized where we're not talking about. Like if we needed to cut stuff, let's cut stuff, but let's just know the top number, like how high we're going to go for this budget. So that way we can be like, all right, we're three million over. Let's go find the three million rather than being in the spot where. And it's because of the 3% cap is kind of making it where, okay, technically, and he kind of gives a breakdown. You can go and use the 2024 number. And use your 3% growth off of that or a 3% increase. Don't use growth. Because all these words mean something different. So your 3% cap increase and new growth, which are both allowed. Or you can use the 2025, just kind of establish that new precedent. Whatever you want to do, we don't care. Just let us know what you want.
Yeah.
And so I think those graphics were really important because it really breaks down to kind of see what was going on there. And then also on there, he showed the city council president's budget, how that fell into that. What, whatnot. Where do you think that they should fall though? What numbers do you think they should use?
Do I?
What's yours?
I, I mean, I would love to see last year's. I mean, I think that's the goal. I mean, obviously. You have the ability to start earlier. So I understand the reasoning and the logic to use that higher number and then work down from there. But also I know people in Minot don't want, and again, you might not see necessarily an increase in taxes with the $1,600 credit coming in. But also you won't see the full effect of that $1,600.
See, it was an interesting meeting. So we're kind of going to follow the timeline of it a little bit. So we're going to talk about this budget here at the beginning. Then we're going to talk about other stuff and then we're going to jump back to budget if that's how the flow happened. But. Sorry, excuse me. One thing that was. It, what's interesting for the city of mine is they have this opportunity where they can go and they can take the 2025. They can use their 3% cap plus growth and they can work that next year and they can see how that feels to use words that we've heard at council. They can see how that feels, still having the 2024 budget that they could use the following year. The 2024 budget doesn't fall off until next year's budget cycle.
Yeah, because you have three years, you can go back prior.
Right. So the 2023 falls off this year. They can go and do this where they could have the 2025 budget plus 3% cap plus growth. And then the following year be like, hey, guys, like we're barely making it now.
Things didn't work out the way we expected.
Yep.
Whatever it might be.
We got to do an increase so that we don't handicap ourselves for future years.
Yep.
And that makes sense or handcuff ourselves for future years. And that, that would make sense. Although still, if you're going to go and increase taxes, you're going to have to be accountable to the people because I don't know if they're thrilled about that. But, and that was talked about later on.
And yeah, they, they definitely ended up rounding back around there because like you said, they, they started here and they talked about the budget, but then it started kind of. They, they stuck similar with it with the verf, but then it kind of started going a little bit more.
Yeah.
I don't want to say off the rails because it was all relevant to the budget, but a little bit more in the weeds, I guess. Yeah.
Next up, we'll talk about the verf. Fuller, Alderman Roffler made a motion on this. And we'll let him use his own words because I would describe it the best.
There you go. As we're looking at this, and I know we've talked about the verf as one of the big things over the last year or so. But with the constraints in the budget, with trying to get us back to where we were, one of the first things I'd like to do is talk about just cutting out the verf this year. And maybe pushing it a year or two. I know there's going to be vehicles we have to replace. You're going to have to bring those to us and we're going to have to replace them. But the, the amount of money that we're putting away right now to start saving for replacing vehicles in the future. I don't think it's feasible. And while I think it's a great idea, if, if we had our druthers and weren't. Basically impacted by flood control and everything else that's going on, the state cap. But I think that's a, in my mind, that's a good place to start because if we have to replace six vehicles this year and it costs us $300,000. That's a $2 million savings right there that we just incurred by not funding that verf right away.
If we had our druthers, it's a great idea, but it just doesn't work for this budget. Cycle was the feeling on the verf. And so there's a motion to get out. And I don't know if everybody is familiar with what the verf is. It's basically a vehicle replacement plan.
Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. It's, it's pretty much a savings account for future vehicles to put it into as, you know, as much layman terms as possible. Simplifying it down to the best of the ability. It's, we start saving away so we can better and more frequently replace our older vehicles in our fleets.
Right. And the idea is this, I believe it was City Finance Director David Lakefield that broke it down on a fire truck. It costs a million plus on a fire truck to replace. Well, if you know you have a fire truck, that is. Hey, in the next five years, we're going to have to replace this fire truck most likely. Then you're able to go begin, set aside $300,000 a year for that. So then when it's time to make that purchase, you're not looking at going to reserves for this million dollars and all right, we spent a million dollars there. We can't go and do this, this, and this. You've already set aside the money and it's been budgeted around. Maybe you had to make other cuts along the way, but it was already done. And so that was. Kind of like, I think the best explanation of how this could impact budgets. The fear is that, hey, we're going to, we're, is not changing our expenditures. We're already spending this money. So you're just trying to get it built into the budget where you can replace these cars almost without approval because the money's already there. That's almost feels like the, not fear, but the kickback on it.
This, yeah, the backside of it. Yeah.
Not much savings that's found. It's not that there's going to be this ton of savings or that we're going to decrease our maintenance or anything like that.
There's going to be some minimal maintenance savings and that's going to be probably the extent of it.
But we're not going to be letting go of an employee or something like that. So for the city, they're going to still have the same cost. It might be like you said, some. Or referring to like a little bit less oil we have to buy or something like that, but that's about it.
It's, it's minimal to say the least, and it actually sounds like they're going to, while they, they, they passed the removal of it from it, but they also are, wanted staff to come back and then bring a. What, like a list of must have vehicles that need replacement for next year kind of thing.
We have a clip queued up where we're actually going to have Banfield. We did a good job or tried to do a good job of explaining the verf, but he's going to kind of share his.
Knock it out a little better.
Of why he would like to see that implemented at the city.
To get ourselves to. I guess a more sustainable point when it comes to the verf itself, we would actually need closer to about 6.1 million dollars. That is again, getting after all vehicles from the oldest, the 1957 vehicle types, all the way through the 2010. The verf was originally intended to go ahead and dial that number back, give us a little bit more flexibility when it comes to availability of budgets. To allow us the opportunity, as you're seeing now with the 2.3 million dollar verf funds that are available. To look at vehicles that need to be replaced, that might be not as new as the 2010 vehicle type. So it allows us to move that pin. Looking over, I was actually pulling up the vehicles that were set to be replaced in 2026. And again, I'd have to go through this a little closer. But I'm seeing right now, just off of preliminary looks, there's just quite a few vehicles right now for each of the departments that are must need vehicles. All of them have been identified as older vehicle types and I'd have to run in the model to determine exactly what year group that would fall within. Right now, I believe with the 2.3 million dollars, we have roughly vehicles being replaced up to 2003.
So we.
Boy, that's a shout out.
Jump back in. We have a little speaker we listen to. That's hilarious.
Shared speaker.
That's hilarious. We got busted, man.
You, you gotta be slower with the, the cutback. But no, he does a great job kind of outlining the, the basis that staff would like to see a verf in place. Some of the potential benefits that you could see.
But he's saying, if we actually wanted to fund it, we'd have to be at six million plus.
Yeah.
And right now the budget was like between two and three million.
Yeah. So if you want the full effect of it.
Right. He's saying even with that two, three million though, that's, he almost sounds like the way he says it, that that's the number that they need no matter what. Like we, there's already these cars that are going to be replaced this year that are in the two to three million.
Which is why then the follow-up came to bring effectively that list back to council. I assume what will be tonight then. For the vehicles that need immediate or maybe not immediate, but within replacement within the next probably year, year and a half.
Right. K hits one to six. You guys look like you were in a huddle. Go team. That's right. Tyler's getting his football tournament.
Yes, I do have, we got the game going. And also shout out to Joe and Tom at K hits. Those guys killed it yesterday and Saturday with some of that severe weather coverage. Joe was on there live streaming for like four hours straight. Guy.
Dude.
Shout out to Joe.
That's like NFL red zone type stuff right there.
Yeah. Cause there was some crazy terrible weather over the weekend. Tornadoes in September. That's some stuff you don't expect to see.
Massive flooding in Bismarck, like in the wrong places.
Wild downtown Bismarck yesterday. Yeah.
It's sad.
So again, shout out K hits 106 on the radio, online, Facebook, whatever you need. They, they got your severe weather coverage there.
They do. So going back to the verf, the physical impact, I'm not sure if we're going to fill that this year or not. But one thing that creeped into that discussion was one, in Banfield's clip, you hear him talk about years. And he clarifies after comments made from a council person, he clarifies, we're not looking at the year of a car and saying, okay, automatic replacement. That's, that's so old. We're automatically replacing that.
Yeah.
They're still looking at the mechanics of the car, the reliability of the car, making sure that all that is good. And so, and we have a 2003 car that's still rocking and nothing's wrong with it. Then they'll keep it around. But one of the key things that might make the most impact on Minot. City of Minot is the fleet manager position.
Sure.
In this whole deal, because what they're saying, they said that the verf may help with this a little bit, but that just the fleet manager is clarified that just the fleet manager position. Will allow them to, instead of having a department have a car. Will allow the city to have a car. And so when a department only uses it, X amount of days of the week or hours of the day, or however that works. I don't want to go throw any numbers out there because I don't want to act like we're not like terribly under utilizing our resources.
To be fair, we don't know the specificities of when every vehicle is used in the city and not kind of thing.
But the fleet manager would.
Yes, exactly.
And they would be able to go and make it where water and. Whatever other department is able to use the same car on different days of the week, because that's how the schedules are needed.
Yeah.
Not putting people into a position where they're not able to get cars when they need one. It just would create more flexibility and a better utilization of our resources.
Centralizes it a little bit more and makes it so it's a little bit more clear of where these vehicles are going and when.
That does not go away and that stays as probably the biggest impact in that area immediately. Now, in the long term, the verf is an interesting concept. It makes sense in some ways, but then in other ways, I, I can see where I, I'm not, I'm on the fence about it.
Yeah. Cause, cause generally I don't know if it feels like it's necessary, but almost with the 3% cap coming in play, almost feels like it's something that maybe.
Yeah.
A better idea than not in the long run kind of thing.
Cause the, you're going to force, if you don't do it, you're going to force that, if you don't implement the verf, you're going to force your reserves to cover. Those expenditures with the chance that you may not have as much going into reserves. So how are you going to replace it?
Where, where does that balance come from at that point? Yeah.
Right.
And that's.
And those would be unexpected because they still go and have the expected purchases that they make.
Yeah.
But then to your point, you're saying, if you know you need to replace a million dollar fire truck, well, that's your whole increase is just paying for that fire truck.
And then there's always the off, you know, a cop car gets into an accident and now we need a new cruiser kind of thing too.
There's those other unexpected ones which are going to come from reserves, but if you, even if you budget at the beginning of the year. For it and it's an increase in your budget, then you run out of cap.
Yep.
Space.
Yep. And it's still going to be maxed out at some point.
Feels like a NFL team.
I know, right? We got the cap space. Yeah. We're working up against the cap.
Royalties or whatever they call it.
Can't do what the basketball NBA Clippers did, the Clippers did with Kawhi Leonard and pay him under the table.
Yeah, that's some crazy stuff there, man.
But you have another clip lined up here. Where are we going to with this one?
Yeah. So something else that happened, this, the verf did pass the removal, the verf did pass.
Yep. And then the staff is going to come back with those, that list of vehicles in need of maybe not immediate, but quick replacement.
Another topic that came up was recycling.
Yeah, this wasn't, we'll, we'll get into it. Let's play.
We'll let Alderman bless him, make his motion.
To bring a motion to remove this recycling mandate from our, I don't know if it's in ordinance or wherever that would need to be done. And direct staff to bring us a number to offset lost revenue from customers opting out, what we expect that to look like to adjust the ongoing fee.
So yes.
Much better that time. So. He's just making a motion right now. If you're part of the, if you pay for city water, and this was talked about, like Alderman, my case builder. Newest city council member. He's like, yeah, we're building a house. We have a, just studded out. That's all that's up and we need water. We go, we contact the city. We're like, hey, we need some water here. This new build, they're going to stop by, drop off a garbage can and drop off a recycling container. Cause it's all part of the deal. We don't need those things. We have to keep track of them. They may be blowing down the street on windy days. All this stuff is kind of like this hassle. And so what this motion is doing is trying to get rid of the mandate that just because you pay for city water. Means that you get a garbage can. That's still part of the mandate, but you don't necessarily get the recycling. You can opt in or out of the recycling.
And the follow-up with that would effectively be a reevaluation of the, the, the garbage and recycling fee that would come to fruition eventually with this. You know, if we're going to take away that mandate part, you're going to have people cutting off. Well, now if you want to keep the program. Able to keep itself alive more or less, rather than the city having to foot the bill, they might try to increase those, you know. Costs that by a hair, but it's not like it's something that would be a massive cost increase to people that wanted to recycle.
Right. There's an interesting deal that comes up because I think this has probably. It has no impact. It's a, it's a weird deal because it really has no impact on people's everyday life. Because they can keep on going as they are.
Yeah.
But it does have an impact. If there was a ton that dropped off and they increased the fees and there could be an impact there. So there was a feeling that. This is something that, you know, the city should definitely be there for in order to chime in on. And so I believe it got tabled until today's meeting.
Yes, it did. That was the, I, I'm not going to say, it, it felt like this subject spent a little bit of time on.
Yeah.
Maybe it wasn't.
There's a lot of back and forth about how it impact as far as. The recycling date. So right now, people, people already lost a garbage day. There was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about it. About like how the people are going to feel. And it's like, okay, great. But here's the deal. If they really feel that way, they can just keep things as is.
Exactly. And you just don't change anything. You don't touch it. You just leave it as be.
Right.
And continue on down.
Yeah, that's all that has to happen. The biggest impact was for the city side was, all right, if there's a thousand people that opt out, how are we going to get the thousand recycling containers?
Like where, how do we actually go and pick all of those up at that point?
Right. Cause that's going to be a lot of, a lot of time spent by city staff to make that happen.
Yeah.
But other than that, there's like no impact on.
And then, yeah, like you said, in the long run, regardless, this thing got tabled till tonight anyways.
Yay. Something else to add to our five hour meeting.
It's going to be a long. I'm going to be up.
Are you bringing a seat cushion? Or you, you're not making.
I have a football game tonight, so I don't get to start watching until a couple of hours later.
We'll be up here at nine AM tomorrow, but we might be tired.
I will be spending, having a late night tonight. I can feel it.
And it's harder to get clips off of the lives. So it's easy to get, we have software. We'll, we'll just tell you the scoop. We have software where we can download. The entire video and we're able to throw it into a video editing software and just go through and quickly make the clips that we want. And so it's.
Works great.
It's not bad, but the problem is. Because on YouTube's end, and maybe we should try downloading off of Facebook. I guess I didn't think about that till right now. On YouTube's end. It has to finish processing the live stream to allow you to download it.
Which the longer the live stream, the longer the process takes.
Typically it's not available to download by the next morning. And so then you have to go and use your old screen recorder. Which is so annoying and the quality is less and go about it. And I bet you Joe Goldaddy has some software he's developed that will get this fixed, but. That's all right. We'll love to hear about it.
For us at least, yes. We, we, we are stuck with dealing with whatever we, hopefully, a lot of time in the shorter meetings, it's not a huge deal for those follow-up. Episodes for us, but one that like tonight that I got a sneaky feeling is.
It's gonna be a long one.
Going to be a marathon.
Yeah.
Going to be a marathon. Yeah. It's, it won't be ready to be processed by the next morning.
So they, uh, kept moving there at city council like we need to do right now.
Yes. After that, uh.
Eventually they got to finally back to the 2025 budget or 2026 budget. And there was a motion that was made by Alderman Lisa Olson to make 2024 as the base budget year. Here's that motion.
You and I spent a lot of time along with our finance director in developing a letter, developing a proposed budget. And in there, we did allow for our base year to be 2024, which is allowed in House Bill 1176 that our state legislators spent many months discussing. So it is allowed. And I think that, um, their intent certainly was to, for us to keep. Our, our property taxes at a very manageable level, but I don't think they wanted to handcuff us. So they gave us some flexibility and in using 2024 is our, our base, uh, budget, our base year. It gives us some flexibility, not only for this year, but for the next two years, if I'm correct. Yes. Um, and so my motion is that in our, our budget planning that we are going to be actively involved in for the next couple of weeks. That we use our 2024 as our base year.
So this was kind of what Lakefield was looking for. He was looking at the beginning of the meeting. It's like, tell us what numbers you want to base off. So this is.
The start of kind of trying to find what that top number should be.
The motion's made to do that 2024, which is completely within legal bounds. But it's definitely an increase. And if it was maxed out, so actually was done to its full extent, which there, the president's budget wanted. But it was done to its fullest extent. It would increase the budget by like five million.
About five and a half million.
And that would be a substantial hit on property taxes. There would be a substantial increase in property taxes if that would happen. And that's part of the discussion that they get into. We have a lot of clips from this area, the, the discussion. I don't know if we're going to play them all, but.
This is where a lot of the actual, the meat of this meeting came from was kind of this area.
Although there's some really good stuff at the end that really gets into some feelings about stuff. But one thing that really felt that was missed is, and this is not fully the fault of the council people. I'm just saying that from my perspective is there's still ambiguity about this three percent cap. It's still unclear.
And, and one of the things that kind of came up with that too, is like, hey, if we. Do choose this as our baseline budget, are we going to be able to have the ability to choose a different baseline for next year? Or are we stuck with this? And it's like, well, you have three year kind of thing and it should expand back out. But there's still, like you said, that ambiguity and a lot of that gray area with the three percent cap, I think is what's leaving us in a lot of this position we're in right now.
We have a clip of Lakefield explaining three percent cap here in a minute, but the, whether 2024 is used as the baseline or 2023 or 2025, it makes no difference. Really? Because we can go up to the highest in the last three years budget plus three percent plus growth. We can do that no matter what.
Yeah.
What, whatever baseline you want to say you're going to use, that's fine, but we can do that no matter what. The question is, how much money do you want to spend?
That's the real.
That's the real question. And that was the more difficult to get place for council get to, get to. They didn't want to fully commit because there are different feelings on that. They, and Blessings like at one point is like, yeah, I mean, I, I don't care. We can use this as the baseline basically. But I don't think we should spend the full amount. And so then they tried to talk about maybe tucking away some in a rainy day fund almost. Where maybe down the road, we can use that, though we want to use it right now. And then finally there's a realization of, no. We can't go and just say, hey, we use that budget, but we didn't use all of it. They don't care. They just want to see the mill levy for the last year. Or the last three years, but the, so yeah, the highest mill levy in the last three years. Okay. That's the one you can use. We don't care about what your intent was for the other one. We just want to know what the highest mill levy.
What is the highest number we can go up to?
Yeah. And if we are. State wants to know, and that's what the city needs to know.
If we're above that number, which I think eventually they get to the conclusion that they are, then where do we need to find the cuts at?
Yeah. So a little bit of that, uh, this is Lakefield explaining three percent gap.
So Dave, just to, just to start thinking about this in terms of real dollars for a moment. So let's say that we make the decision. And I assume there's some form we turn in somewhere that says what our baseline is, or it's publicly published or something, right? So we say 24 is our baseline, which sets what our max would be, which is the 29.5. So that's, that's the first thought. Then we, let's just for sake of argument, we come back in and we match exactly to the 25 number. So theoretically there's four and a half million dollars that we've decided to forego that we could have levied. We are then able to take a portion of that and carry it forward. And that's the steady state way of looking at it. Every year we could do that. If we come in underneath what our baseline is. We can carry that forward. So in the scenario I just gave where we use 24 as a baseline and we spend the 25 number, which is just over 24 million dollars. What do we bank for future use? Is there an easy way to think about it?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Blessam, and that's where we get into, uh, a little bit of dicey territory because the way the calculation is done is it tells us we can carry forward our three percent increase.
Not dollars.
Not dollars, a three percent increase. So that's what I'm saying is, is. I agree with you a hundred percent. The math says that we had five million dollars that we should be able to bank going forward. The way this calculation is written out, it says we have three percent increase that we can carry forward. So once we get past that, the ability to claw back that increase, we're going to be limited to three percent plus whatever. Of the percentage increase we have carried forward.
So that, that was kind of the.
That wraparound situation of, well, could we just start banking it into the future? And like, well, kind of you could, but in reality it's not really going to work out.
You just get the three percent.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that three percent, I guess it's a big distinction because that three percent is different a lot of times from what. The actual dollar amount feels like it should be in those cases.
Right. So very interesting there. Um.
Coming off of that or right around that area, that's why they ended up going in. And I think what they, one of the more meaningful things that came away from this meeting, they went in and motioned to decrease the street maintenance budget from. Obviously it originally started at 12 million in the preliminary budget. I think the, uh, council president budget moved it down to 11. And now in this, they officially, yeah, motioned and moved it down to 10 and that was approved.
See that, and that was some interesting stuff that was talked about was around that. There was talk about this, how it was being pursued by the citizens of Minot basically. And there's now a term that's being used. It used to be they had the survey that they did, the citizen satisfaction survey. And now it's that there's a statistically valid or. A survey that they did because they're trying to go and show how great this survey is. And honestly, in my opinion, I don't love it. When you go and you look at the numbers to get like the opinion of thirty or forty plus thousand people, they don't need that many people. To have a statistically valid survey. At all. Um, and if it, if they're so accurate, then why don't they do that way when we're voting in elections?
Sure. Yeah.
They don't because that's, there's not enough polling data shows like true polling data, not the exit surveys that we've done. Where we're just getting peoples, what they voted for during this timeframe, um, and how many people we can get in that timeframe that we have.
True historically tracked polling data where you can.
Sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it's not. Because there's no way you can determine what actually everybody's thoughts are. And I haven't seen the demographics of these surveys and things like that, uh, which would really, and I'm sure there's varying demographics. I'm sure it's well done. Not here criticizing.
But those things tell a story.
Yeah. I, I'm not here criticizing that the surveys in itself are not accurate, are not well done, are not quality or anything like that. That's not my argument. My argument is that it just still does not bring the basis for the entire city. If you have somebody that drives a hundred miles a day around town, they're going to have a completely different view of how the roads feel and how the roads are. And how the construction feels and everything. Then somebody that drives 10 miles. Um, there's just so many factors that go into it. So.
It's true.
It's, it's really difficult to gather that data just based off of.
Feel.
Four hundred, four to five hundred people. Um, but you, you hear that a lot and that came up, that conversation came up with the roads. Saying that, you know, maybe, uh, people are feeling that all the main arteries in town are shut down. Not all, but a lot of them. And, uh, it kind of is frustrating and it was a almost worst case scenario with, uh, the.
We have, we had one of the wettest Julys we've had ever, like top five wettest summers we've had. I mean, it's one of those things where.
DOT says, hey, we're going to do this project and that wasn't really anticipated.
Yep. And then that kid, it's pushed back and pushed back and it's, I don't even know if they've started on it. And I think they started on it, but I don't think.
They're in the middle of it.
Yeah. It hasn't been finished yet. No, on South Broadway there, those lanes are still all blocked off. And it just gives people that perception that maybe enough is happening. And again, even if it's not, statistically speaking, it's not enough to. It's maybe barely enough to hold, to tread water and it's not enough to pick up ground. It, it just, it feels to the people of Minot that it's maybe enough.
Right. Uh, for sure. So I think it was.
Which is why I think that's one of the bigger things that came from this meeting.
It was a bigger thing. You worry by the cutback because you definitely don't want to get behind on it. And they go and flashback to, if you just go when we were. But it feels like we shouldn't be if we're going to go off the field. It was like, and the, this count goes off more than field, but it feels like we shouldn't be. Feels like we should be all right.
I agree. It, it, it feels like it should be okay.
Hey, and, and we were, we had the best roads in America.
Yes. According to Alderman Scott Sampson.
I love that.
On a recent, recent road trip across the country, he, uh, stands by North Dakota and Minot having some of the best roads in the country.
You know, it's, it's amazing about road trips though, that you can tell when you're going to a different state simply because the roads change.
Yes.
Like it is on the state line. You're like, all right, I can tell I'm not going to enjoy these roads.
Quality, the pavement process, it's, it's, it changes.
Be going along and all good with construction, no construction going on. And then you hit that state line and all of a sudden there's construction for miles.
Yep. You just get throttled with it all of a sudden. And it's like, well, here we go.
Yep. That's one of those fun things about driving across the country. I thought that was an awesome line that he.
That was a fun little quote he had there without a doubt.
Like someone used to create, create a graphic for that one. Cause it was money.
A couple of other things that kind of came out of, uh, do you have another?
I got more clips, but go where you're going.
I was just going to mention, um, the, the conversation they had about that whole vacancy based budgeting thing where they changed the. Location of where the vacant jobs are held. I, I think this already happened by the time we're at here, but I don't think we mentioned this one.
There's a lot of stuff in there.
There was. It, it was an interesting little conversation they had because at the state level, the office and, um, management and the budget takes over all of the. Vacated positions that are open and it handles them and budgets for them independently. And there was kind of a thought and discussion about the city of Minot trying to do something similar where all of those vacant positions go to the city manager's budget. And, or office, and it's all pretty much budgeted through there. And, uh, they had some discussion on it and. There's going to be a process while they, they're, they're working into getting for it, but.
But basically this allows any position that goes open again to basically be revalidated as being needed.
Yep.
That I believe that's part of the concept and, uh, interim city manager, Tom Joyce said that he's already told some departments. Like, all right, that position comes of, all right, I'll, I'll let you hire again this time.
This one, but when this thing comes up again, don't expect.
Don't expect to be prepared.
Yep.
And I, I think that's really interesting. And so that's what this position allows is for them to go back into his budget, to his purview. Where he was like, no, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to allow this position to be filled again. Um, and potentially allow some of those budget decreases.
Yeah. And I, I think that gives, uh, it's in line with Minot and our city government and giving the city manager that kind of power. And I think that's a good thing to have for them. And I guess my only question on it is. If say some weird situation happens and a bunch of those vacancies are filled at the same time. It could maybe create a weird budgeting situation in the future, but that's a pretty specific indication, like situation.
The reason why that is because they only fund 60% of the ones that are in it. 60% of the, of the salaries. So if it's a hundred percent, a hundred K salary, they only fund 60K of it. So that, that's the only thing they can make it weird.
And again, it's a very specific slight, say, sequence of situations that would have to come up for something like that.
I think they were gathering data to, to see exactly, making sure the numbers would be right. Because they didn't want to be in a position where, hey, these positions fill faster than what.
Yeah.
You're going to want.
And it's, yeah, way over the top kind of thing.
Right. Yeah. So yeah, that was an interesting thing that happened for sure. So I have some clips here. I have, um, three clips or, or two clips, I believe, where it, it's Monday. Okay. Just work with me. I have one from Blessam and one from Alderman Paul Pittner on basically giving their budget summary. So we'll let. We'll let Blessam go first. He kind of states where he's at on this year's budget.
The, the thought then is if we use that baseline, we bank the full three percent. Just don't even think of it as dollars now. It's a percent. Cause that's the way it's written. So next year, when we're sitting in this spot and we're, and we're doing our budget. And we're contemplating a three percent increase over whatever we did this year or whatever baseline we've set again. We would then have that extra three percent that we also could work with as a buffer if required. Okay? And so, yeah, so I, you're, you're not Dave. So I think, I think we're generally on the same page. We got to see how it plays out. But for my council colleagues, these are two separate questions in my mind. A question right now that's on the table is, do we have some protections we can put in place for the rainy day that could come? Right? I, and I understand that. Like I, that's why I seconded the motion and I'm, I'm generally supportive of that. But I think you all know where I'm at on all of this, which is I want it as flat as we can make it at all times. So banking what we can is a different question than padding our spending and our actual levy to try to actually drive our trajectory. Cause that's a whole different question and I will not support that.
Kind of talked about some of that, but that was basically where Blessam was out on the budget. And now we're going to jump to Paul Pittner and he kind of gives his summary of where he is at on the budget as well.
You know, when we talk about some of the cuts we've made, which we can be supportive and, and, and say, you know, we need a break on road maintenance. But when you take out road maintenance or consulting or the verf with some of the constraints we have, those are never a possibility in the future. If we, if we hamstring ourselves, I mean, we can never recapture those types of projects or level of services for citizens, which. Some can say they've asked for through citizen satisfaction surveys or, or, or whatnot. Or we've had, like you say, been perfect storm with some of these road projects. And then the wettest July on record to slow some of them up, you know, to, 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 uh, highlight, uh, uh, be highlighted by the start of school starting. So again, I agree. I, I just don't want us to get into the position. I've said it before. I don't want us to lie to ourselves about what it costs to provide the level of services in Minot. And are there efficiencies? Absolutely. Like to, to, to Alderman Blessam's point, this is what we're here to do. We're here to sharpen our pencils. And then as department heads, you guys are here to sharpen your pencils. But again, I just don't want us to back ourselves into a corner so that all of a sudden, hey, we can never get to 11 million dollars. And now we're, now we're perpetually moving backwards on road maintenance. So we're perpetually moving back on services. And then you have public safety that we are going to have to factor some of these budgets, you know, what if you do have a good hiring year? Now you can't hire. You're, you're, you're faced with dipping into reserves and, and, and I get the point of maintaining high level of reserves. And if we want to spend those down to put it to work for the citizens, I'm on board with that as well. So that we, they don't see those hikes in, in, in property tax, uh, levies. But again, I think we need to be honest with ourselves about what it costs to run the city and, and. And making sure we maintain that flexibility. Cause if we don't do it this year. Next year's our, our, our last chance, last chance to capture that level of, 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 of investment into the city.
I think he actually summarized it really well.
Yeah. A hundred percent.
From the view of the cap. And we've talked about some of this, we kind of cut, jumped ahead on our thoughts. That's on me. But we, um. We have told next year, and I, I think that's why it'd be interesting to let this play, year just play out on the 2025 budget. Cause that's kind of the, going forward, the baseline, that's the word that's used a lot. The baseline of what's going to be happening after the next year, that's what's going to be happening. So why don't you see how that plays out? And the next year, if it's like, no, this is a problem, then let's go ahead and get a couple of those increases. Get that verf built back in there, get whatever you need to. Um, I don't know. What's your thoughts on that?
It's, 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 it goes both ways on it. I, I really see why we need to kind of. Take this current budget, the 2025 one is the baseline and really stick with it. Like I, I, I know for a fact taxes being raised is going to be one of the biggest complaints you'll hear about. Or not getting that full effect of that credit where it should be compared to what it would have been last year. But also on the flip side of it, uh, I mean, he made, I think one of the things he said is we can't lie to ourselves about the cost of running government at one point in there. And it maybe this is us figuring out what it does cost at this point. Like this, this is a little bit of our step. Can we really, is this maintainable to keep it at this 2025 base? And I think it probably will be, but if it's not, this is when we'll find out. Going forward to next year, if this is something that's unsustainable, the roads do really lag behind. Something happens over winter that takes out a bigger expense. And then maybe, hey, next year it rolls around and we really need to go and reevaluate this. Now with the people on council, I doubt it'll happen. But I, I feel like, I, I feel like this is the, that, that in theory at least is the best route to take.
Next year's going to be an election year.
Yep.
Um, but none. But none, um, let's see, next year's an election year and you have Hayes.
Pittner and Lisa Olson that'll be up for reelection and Janser as well as mayor.
So yeah, we'll see how that part plays out. Last comment on this, and then we're gonna talk about just for a couple of minutes. Well, maybe not the last comment, but one of the last comments on this. Um, and then we'll talk about the hearing tonight that you should be at. If you're a citizen of Minot, you should be at it.
Or at least listening to.
There was a statement that Blessam made throughout and we go and we hear all the hard things that are said about the budget and everything, all that and all that. And I just think that this is a good clip to play because probably most council people have said something in this ballpark, but this was well said.
One other thing I wanted to note for staff is that as I went back through the budget, you know, now my third, fourth, fifth times as I'm going through things, I am continually astounded by the wonderful work that was done. When we look at salaries and benefit numbers that are both under two percent growth each, we, we did some great work or, or I should say you did some great work. And so I, you know, I think it's put us in a position where we have the ability to make the decisions that we need to make. We, we've got a range now to work with and it's gonna really be the consensus of the council that directs us forward from here. But the, the real heavy lifting to start bending the curve as I've looked at it has already been done. And so I, I just applaud the staff again. That's, that's great work that's been done to this point.
I think that's really good. Staff did a great job on this one.
Regardless of how much work, um, and, or not work, but how much conversation goes into, and I don't wanna say tearing it apart, but really dissecting, dissecting the budget that this was a ton of work that got put into it. And they did a phenomenal job in presenting it and doing that work. Like this is one of the better budgets you can look into and read, I think.
Very good. That leaves us with tonight. Well, actually I want to say one last thing. If you go to that meeting after this conversation, so in the last 30, 45 minutes of that meeting, there's some interesting conversations that finally, once you get about two or three hours into a city council meeting, some.
Some things come to light a little bit more.
Start coming out and people are like, all right. And you know, it's time to call a meeting.
Yeah. If you, if there's part of it to, uh, obviously watch the whole thing, but if you're gonna only watch a half hour of it, that last half hour is the, the, the better part.
The money time.
Yeah. But tonight, it is the regularly scheduled city council meeting with the public hearing on the budget. We'll just start kind of looking over the agenda. There's gonna be the classic, there's a proclamation for the Minot Orchestra in its 100th year. Then of course we have a public hearing on Abel Acres Preliminary Platte, which I'm sure will be very quick. And then we will have the consent items, which it looks like there's what 13 total this, this week, not a ton. Then we move into the action items. First one is a approval of a new 30 foot transit bus that's been refurbished. Or yeah, excuse me, not brand new, but a new for us refurbished 2006 bus. And then we have a local preference bidding policy, something that was brought up earlier. Yep. If we're gonna, this is the staff recommendation or staff items on how this would look.
It's without a recommendation.
Yep. Yep. If we were to pick this up, it would be, it, it leaves it up to the council effectively.
Specifically says recommended action. This item is submitted without a recommendation. It includes a local bidding preference resolution for council discussion. City council will decide whether to implement it or not. If implemented, the local preference language will be included in bid documents that utilize local preference bidding.
I've got a sneaky feeling that's gonna pass four to three. And then after that, uh, the third item was pulled from the agenda. And then we have the fourth item, which is the public hearing on the annual budget.
So that one is gonna take a while.
Yeah. This alone could be like.
Do you think it's gonna be packed crowd? Are people gonna be outside of the chambers?
Not quite, I don't think, but I think it'll be a full chambers.
Full chambers tonight. Kyle, you have heard it here first. Actually you haven't. Other people have said it too.
Yeah. I've heard of a lot of people talking about wanting to go. We'll actually see if they show up or not.
You've heard it here from Kyler. Full chambers tonight.
Got a feeling.
How long is it gonna go?
I'm gonna say over four hours.
Calling the plus four.
I'm saying it's gonna be, yeah, between four to five hours.
So we're looking at nine thirty, ten o'clock.
Yeah, that's my thoughts. So that's gonna be like a, man, if I don't start watching it till like eight, nine o'clock. It's gonna be a late night. It'll be fun.
Well, specifically we'll be talking about the public hearing.
Yes, that is the part that we will be dissecting most tomorrow.
If it goes four and a half, five hours, then we may not get to the rest of the council.
Couple of parts to get skipped through a little bit.
One thing that's exciting is, or is cool is on Thursday, we are gonna have one of, uh, the city, one of the people at the diocese are gonna be joining here at our table.
Uh, great. I look forward to it.
Alderman Rob Fuller.
Rob's back. We're gonna have some great conversation on Thursday then. And for tonight, a couple of final things after that public hearing, which will last a hot minute. We're gonna have the city manager finalist recommendations. So the three finalists for city manager are gonna be recommended. I, I, I mean, I know who Tom Joyce is and just got feeling I would like him, but I mean, I gotta wait till the interview process.
Gotta know who all three, but at this point we're just, we're probably the only one that I rejoice about.
Yeah. We have a, a settlement agreement with Parkview. Uh, I think that's the trailer court. And then there's finally the seventh action item is the review of the recycling policy, which they spent an hour talking about last Tuesday, just to table it and bring back up tonight. And then after that, of course, is the personal appearances section. So if anyone has something they need to say that they didn't get a chance to say during the public discussion on the budget, they can always say it there. Then Ms. Laney's discussion, the liaison reports. And finally that'll be at, at like 10:30 at night. They'll call her a day. So also by me saying this is gonna be a four or five hour meeting, somehow they're gonna get this done in two.
You think you're just gonna juice this one? You're hoping.
I hope I do. But I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, it's not gonna happen. It's gonna be a four or five hour meeting. There's no way it's not.
Yeah. I was looking in the packet to see if they actually had the finalist names in there, but they don't.
Not yet. Yeah. I didn't see it in the base one, but I didn't look all the way at the agenda items. But that's it. And now we get to wait till tonight.
You excited?
I am excited for tomorrow.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good discussion. Kylie and I will be back tomorrow. Uh, Thursday, we're gonna be back. And then we might have a couple of minor matters. There's a couple of interviews I'm trying to set up for that.
Hey, look at that. That's exciting.
For some one on ones.
Yeah.
You have a big football game tonight.
We have a football game tonight. There's a chance pending on injuries and how kids healed over the weekend, we won't be able to play, but.
Oh.
Well, we have, we play nine man football. We got 13 kids on the team. I got two that I know for a fact aren't gonna play tomorrow or tonight. So if like one of like the two that kind of had some injury bugs aren't gonna be ready to roll and we only get 10, I don't think we're gonna be able to play with 10.
Bro, you guys gotta soften up your practices a little bit. Unbelievable.
So of, yeah, yeah. I know. We're running them too much. I'm sorry.
For sure. It's all on you.
I accept the blame. I'll take the fall.
Even though you don't agree with it.
I'll accept it regardless.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to city council meeting tonight, kind of. I'm, I'm looking forward to the public hearing and hearing just, I love it when the citizens get out and state their opinions. There's some good stuff that comes from that. And there's some interesting stuff that comes from that.
Always does. So can't wait for tonight and can't wait for tomorrow.
Right, for sure. And yeah.
Final takeaways. I think I'm ready for tonight at this point.
Yeah. Final takeaways is not thrilled about how this meeting got played out last week.
Yeah, there was.
Not, not thrilled about it.
With all the, and again, not saying that there was any attempt at covering this up or hiding it or anything, but with the sheer amount of transparency that was talked about leading up to this, it feels like this would have been something that would have been shared around a little bit more.
Sure. Yeah, for sure. Well said. But I don't think that there was anything egregious that was done at the meeting. But there was a lot of information that was talked about and I think the part that's a bummer is I feel like it really would help the people that attend the public hearing tonight to make sure that they've listened to this meeting because it really shows where the council, every member of council is at.
Yeah. No, it does a great job. I mean, I guess maybe a little bit, the exception of the new Alderman Hayes, but between the other six, you're very well aware where they're sitting.
I, and I think it clarified even more than what we had heard to this point. This isn't something where if you've been following along and skip this, you're probably gonna be in the general ballpark, but this really like.
This, this hammered home on some people's thoughts of where they stand.
For sure. Well, uh, hope that you're at the public hearing tonight. I know I'll be, uh, either there or I'll be tuning in online. Either way.
By some chance there's extreme weather and all the games get canceled the night, I will swing by the city council meeting.
Swing by.
You betcha.
Sounds good. Thank you for tuning into this special episode of Minot Talk. If you like it, let us know. Maybe we'll do it again sometime.
Yeah, we will do it again sometime regardless.
We'll have nothing better to do with our lives and say, let's go on air.
Exactly.
So that's not why we're on air today though. All right. Uh, thanks for watching and be sure to have a good rest of your day.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Me Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouthwatering Mexican entrees. Me Mexico, South Broadway.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.